Good evening, I'm calling the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 19th, 2024, back to order. We were in executive session earlier this evening and we took no action on item A or B. And if you would, sorry, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to do so. I don't see anybody. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to our public comment and announcements, I want to make anybody who's here this evening aware that we are aware of a petition that was regarding the sit-fit program done at the community center. Just want to make sure that people understand that there will be no change to that program and there'll be no change in the location of that program. So if for any reason you were here for that, I don't want to make you stay all night to have that conversation. So I'm now-
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Onto public comment and announcement. That was good. I'm just kidding. I'm first. Before I go to you, Jamie, I'm going to go to Dawn.
Oh, I can't even be first. Go ahead.
You can be first, just after. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my sad duty to report to the public that Martha Duffy, who had been the longtime member of the Golf Committee and late its chair last year, has passed away. And she was a fierce, strong woman. I know the town's going to miss her. I certainly will.
Thank you, Dawn. Jeff?
Why don't we go there first?
All right. Oh, Jamie, I'm sorry.
She's already standing.
No, go ahead.
Are you sure you don't want to go? Because there's quite a few too behind me.
No, you go ahead.
You wanted to be first.
Great. Jamie Goodwin, Harwich Channel Station Manager. I'm just here today to inform all of our viewers that the station will be down for two hours tomorrow while I replace a battery backup system. It's very large, very heavy. I have to power down the whole station, replace it, and then run a few tests. So we will be down hopefully between 8:00 and 10:00 tomorrow when the Select Board meeting is scheduled to go off every Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. Secondly, I want to make a note that our station quality has been coming in and out because we have discovered that there is a low voltage electricity backfeeding into our cable system, which is degrading these things on the cable lines called pad attenuators. Comcast has notified us. I'm talking to Sean Libby, and then I'm in discussion with hopefully maybe borrowing the town's electrician from the water department to maybe sort that out. It's also affecting the community center PA system. So we are working on that. So the signal looks good one day and bad the other because there's very low voltage, because I've been down there touching literally everything in that room and I haven't gotten shocked yet. So we're also in talks with Comcast to finally get our HD station, but they're doing wide-scale infrastructure repairs in our area. And they should be sending out a notification soon, but they've called me to let me know that. I should not purchase any additional equipment for the HD upgrade until they get their upgrade done. So it's in the works. I know that the signal is not that great. And if you see that the signal's not great, please call me because I can only watch so many screens in a day at a time. So I do want to hear from the public. If you see something that isn't right, or something's not showing, please give me a jingle or stop by the community center, first door on the left. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Emily?
I don't want to bypass Jeff if he was only waiting for Jamie.
That's okay. Well, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk, coming before you tonight with a few election-related and event-related announcements. I will start with the election announcements. So this is your last meeting before the state primary election. That will take place on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. There are three different ways that voters can participate in this election. They can, of course, vote in person on Election Day. All voters in all four precincts in the town of Harwich vote at the Harwich Community Center, 100 Oak Street, in the gymnasium. Polls will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Voters also have the option to vote early by mail or early in person. Voters who want to vote by mail do need to submit an application. The deadline to submit an application to our office is Monday, August 26th. We have to receive the application, so not postmarked, not dated, but actually received in our office by Monday, the 26th at 5:00 p.m. And we will, we're mailing out ballots on a rolling basis as the applications come into us. And then voters who want to vote early in person have the opportunity beginning this Saturday, August 24th. We're open Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00, and then Monday through Friday, full business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Voters do not need to apply in advance. They just come into the office, come to the Town Clerk's office window, and check in just like they would on Election Day. We'll have voting booths and accessible equipment set up for voters to mark their ballot privately. So that's a come-in, vote, submit your ballot, and check out and leave. So those options are available. We are also open on Saturday for voter registration. So this Saturday, August 24th, is the deadline to register to vote or to make any changes to your voter registration profile. And we're open for that purpose, voter registration from 9:00 to 5:00. So those are the election details. And then we also have two election-related events both happening tomorrow. So I'm very excited that in the morning, 10:00 a.m., we'll be at Brooksbury Library talking about accessible voting. So we'll be demonstrating the AutoMark Accessible Marking Unit. That's the physical machine that's set up during all in-person voting opportunities. This is a machine that physically marks your ballot. It's designed for anyone unable to mark a paper ballot without assistance, so that they can still vote independently. And then more recently, the state rolled out an electronic accessible voting portal for any voters who want to participate and vote by mail but need that accessible technology. So I'll be talking about and demonstrating both of those things tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the library that is open to the public and would love to see folks there. And then tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. I'll be at the community center talking about all things related to election processes and election administration. So we know this is a topic that's really in the forefront of the public conversation right now. So it'll be part information session and then primarily Q and A. We're talking about voting methods, voter list maintenance, election equipment, election results, accessible voting. So come with your questions. We would love to see folks there. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. That's great information.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you want to go?
No, no, listen, please, everybody before me. Everybody else for public comment before me. That's fine. Thank you.
Robin Kelly, I'm the cemetery administrator. This past year, I had the opportunity to work with three Eagle Scouts, who are now Eagle Scouts, three scouts that became Eagle Scouts, Thomas Chase.
Stand up. Stand up, please.
Dennis Theoritis, and Jared Cox. So they made, I can't say how wonderful it was to work with these young gentlemen. I mean, they were amazing. From the beginning, when they first came to me, we went through all different opportunities for them, what projects they wanted to pick, to planning it, to then submitting it to their leader in charge over there, and through all the projects. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about each one of the projects, if I may. So project number one was Hawksnest Cemetery Revival that was done by Thomas. This project involved removing of a broken fence, replacing with new cedar split rail fencing, coordinating with the Department of Conservation and Recreation on this project, because they also oversee part of that property. We had to do a huge coordination with them. All the scouts from Troop 76. We cleaned the brush. They took down the trees, removed the undergrowth. Hawksnest is a small family cemetery. Ebenezer Eldridge is there. He is probably one of our most indexed World Revolutionary War veterans. His pension file is so thick, he must have got letters from every single person he served with, which are in his pension file. So it's a quite rich history for that cemetery. So we were thrilled that we were able to do that project. It looked amazing. So then the second one was Bell's Neck Cemetery. It was Dennis Theoritis did that. He, we also replaced a fence down there. It's the old Smith burial ground. In that cemetery, we also had to clear away all the underbrush. It was so overgrown. And Dennis picked out all sorts of native plantings to plant there. We planted all the native plantings. And Samuel Smith, who was a, also a Revolutionary War veteran, is buried in that cemetery. And then finally, Jared Cox did Preserving Veterans Through Technology, which was an interesting project for Eagle Scouts. It consisted of two phases. First, he had to go and divide the cemetery into sections. He made 14 different sections in the cemetery. He sent the scouts out to find out where all the veterans were located. He went back and then took photographs using 360-degree camera, and then uploaded them all into a database. So all three projects were exceptional. I can't say enough about their dedication, their work, the hard work that they put in, their leadership. Everything about these projects were just unbelievable. To watch these young men work as a team and follow through with all these directions led by these scouts was unbelievable. This is the first time I've been involved with the Eagle Scout project, which I'm so glad I'm going to be doing two more this year. So I wanted to also thank John Cunningham. He is the troop leader. Elaine Mason, is Elaine? Elaine didn't make it. She is the unit committee chair. All the volunteers who contributed their time. Additionally, I would like to thank our town administrator, Joe Powers, and Representative Sarah Peake. They assisted us with permitting from DCR. Jonathan Ruane, who was the archaeologist who came when we did Hawksnest, because he had to make sure that we weren't digging up anything that needed to be seen. And then Sean Casey from DCR, who actually had to help us with all the volunteer documentation for them. So I'd like to convey again to all these Eagle Scouts and their families their remarkable achievements, and we are so proud to, of all their accomplishments and the impact that it's had to our town. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Robin, I have a question for you. Are you able to put links to the projects on the website on your page?
I could do that, yes.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I have photographs. We took photographs at all of the events. So actually, in Thomas's event, it was torrentially pouring part of the day. It was a lot of hard work. It was a lot of fun. But so we have lots of photographs and I can put up-
Yeah, it would be great to put it on the website.
Can I scan in their projects? Okay, all right. So I also have their packets for their, that they submitted.
Perfect.
Yep, and I-
This handout will be in your correspondence in your next meeting.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much, and thank you, boys, for all the hard work. And it's wonderful to know that young people are learning about the history and passing it along to the next generation. So thank you. Jeff?
I think Dave is still standing there.
He's easy to miss.
He's easy to miss.
Just here to remind you that we'll have six more grant agreements. Dave next on CPC Chair for you and your next evolution. I'm here, I'm going to say the end in case you have any questions about the bottom of the agenda.
Great, thank you. Links, yeah, he's trumping you too. It's all right.
Flint Hooper, DPW Director. I'm here this evening to advise the board and the public that the Azalea Drive Bridge Project is completed except for a planting scheme that's going to happen probably next month and a punch list. I know if, you don't live in Headwaters, you have no idea this thing's been going on. This, it was a $4 million bridge project. It was picked up by Mass DOT with their semi-annual bridge inspections. It was funded entirely by DOT, and the only thing the town was responsible for was securing the right-of-way. And I was able to do that with the seven director butters donated right-of-easement, not right-of-easement, right-of entries to the town, which saved a town meeting warrant article as well as some expenses with that. So a real heartfelt thank you to those seven of butters. And I would be remiss if I did not mention a very good contractor, ETNL, and Mark Richardson was the super on it. And just about every concern a resident or in a butterhead, he was able to address in a timely fashion. So we essentially got a $4 million bridge for nothing.
Nice. We like to hear that. Thank you, Link. Jeff?
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Jenny?
No, you can go. Here.
I'm going at this point now. It's time.
It'll never be Jeff's turn.
Time. I thank you all for being here, and what an amazing accomplishment. And you all, you all, all of you should be so proud of yourself. And I like seeing the age bell curve tip a little for our meetings now, seeing all these nice young people in the front row, by not much, right. Our next Select Board meeting will be Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. Select Board Member McCaskill and I, hopefully he'll be there, will hold office hours at the Seal Pub again, which I think was a nice place to hold our informal office hours. And that will be on August 29th, 2024, from 7:15 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. All are welcome to come and tell us what's on their minds and give us their feedback. And lastly, definitely not least, I'd like to say happy birthday to my mother tonight. It's 78 years old today. So happy birthday, Mom.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, and happy birthday to your mom. Carolyn?
Skewing the age was that for Jenny and I. Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. You're laughing a little too hard, Mr. Muffest. I just wanted to let you know about some programs that are coming up early in September, so I just thought I would run through just a few of them. These programs are free and open to everyone. On September 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have the Sound Dunes Concert in the multipurpose room. It's always a wonderful opportunity for people to come together, light refreshments, a lot of great music, and we always have a wonderful time. So we thank the Sound Dunes who perform for free for us. The next one on September 19th at 10:00 a.m., we are doing this in conjunction with the Health Department and the Council on Aging. We're doing a Canning 101. It's more of an instructional informational program. Then later in that day, we are having the Women's Chorus Concert. That's September 19th at 4:30 in the multipurpose room. We're heavy on some music this month. Come on over. Then again, we're partnering with both the Council on Aging and the Health Department on September 26th at 10:00 a.m., talking about spicing it up. And that's about using different spices in cooking. Or maybe it's not. Come see. As I promised, back by popular demand is the slime class. September 27th at 6:30 to 7:30, we are requiring people to sign up because, as you know, we had a waitlist of 40. So please, sign up for that. And then we are doing a three-part series, Discovering the Adventure. This is about a gentleman who went on an RV trip. He left his wife at home, which I think is a lot of fun in this story. And he is going to tell you everything you need to take a three-month trip in an RV. And the photographs and everything are phenomenal. It was just amazing. So we're three sessions, September 20th, September 24th, and October 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and there are about 135 pieces to agcorn, and her head is still attached. Thank you.
Before she goes, if I may, one quick, scouts, this is your opportunity to head out if you'd like to. Just telling you, right now is your opportunity. No one will take offense, okay? You don't have to stay the whole time, but you can if you would like. It's only about another three hours. So it's, now's your shot. Thank you. Trying to save the youth.
Good evening.
Sorry.
I'm Jenny Hewitt. Is this picking me up? I'm not used to this podium. Okay. Yes. Great. So I'm here to make some announcements from Brooksbury Library. And the first is that we've had some pretty significant staffing issues at the library. We've worked incredibly hard in recent months to avoid having to close early due to insufficient staffing, but it's likely we may have to do so soon. We're losing the services of several substitutes who worked a lot this summer, and they've really filled in the gaps. So the trustees and I are really committed to maintaining our open hours, but it's a safety and security issue to be open when we're below minimum staffing levels. So I'm here to tell you that we're looking at the possibility of having to temporarily close early one or two evenings a week beginning in September. I'm not making a definitive announcement yet because we're really working hard to try to avoid this, if at all possible. But since you don't meet until after Labor Day, I thought it would at least make you aware. We will publicize it if we do make this decision, but the thought is that if we reduce our open hours, it would be a temporary change until we can get our permanent staffing levels back up. And I want to emphasize that, that this would, well, part of the plan would be, we're trying to make sure that if we can consolidate the staffing that we have, that we don't have to close unexpectedly. We'd rather do a planned closing. But again, I don't know yet if that's going to happen or not. I'm just going to make you aware of the possibility. So the other news I have a positive. Our summer reading program has been going gangbusters all summer and is still going strong. And we've got special programs planned right up until Labor Day. And that's, many libraries close their summer, stop their summer reading and stop the summer programs in early or mid-August, but we've never done that. And that's part of our commitment to the working families in town. As you know, so many parents have to work extra hours in the summer, and they're not always free to bring their kids to the library. And, but the last two weeks of August is when that childcare gap exists, as, you know, summer camps and rec programs have to close because the councils go back to college. So, you know, either the parents take time off or they rely on friends or family members, grandparents, to watch the kids who may not be used to having the kids all day. So we want to provide the same fun, interesting activities for the kids of working families that didn't get to come earlier in the summer, and also to give them, there's some fun things that they can enjoy together before school starts. So mentioning the programs, I wanted to say, we've had, our friends of the Brooksbury Library offer great, they provide the funding for all the special programs, the storytellers and magic shows and things like that. So we want to thank them for their generosity. And our youth count, I mean, I, Youth Services Librarian Anne Carpenter does a great job too with all personally provided programs. So today, we had a fantastic, as Carol mentioned, slime making being very positive. We had 149 people show up, and that well exceeded the capacity for fire laws of our meeting room. So Anne quickly pivoted and offered two sessions so that we didn't have to turn anyone away, which was great. Coming up in the next two weeks, we've got middle school food and fun, Legos, a visual storytelling series, Animals of the Desert, and an Animals Ambassador, two different programs. Those are special performances. Those will be big programs. We have Ice Cream in a Baggie, a tie-dye program, making a T-shirt, bag, and other craft programs. So I'm not listing dates and times because it would be too long, but all that information's on our website, which is brooksburylibrary.org. And I also want to recognize our Youth Services Librarian. She did 48 programs herself in nine weeks. And so a total of 70 programs for children from toddlers through high school age in those nine weeks, which is very impressive. There were very few days that there weren't one or more programs offered. So Anne's working on the fall schedule now, and I'll be back in September to talk about that. But in another positive announcement I wanted to make, we've had access, we've been able to provide our patrons access to the online edition of the Cape Cod Times for about five years. That's gone from 2,000 views the first year to 99,000 last year. Yeah, it's huge. And it's, so it continues to grow. And two years ago, we were able to add the Wall Street Journal, also very popular. But one thing we really, really wanted was the Boston Globe. But we have to rely on what vendors can offer to libraries, because we pay the subscription and then our patrons use it for free. So it was only recently that a service called Press Reader added the Boston Globe. So we quickly subscribed, so we now have that for our patrons again. And other, they actually have 7,000 newspapers and magazines around the country and around the world. The New York Times is included, the Chicago Tribune, Atlanta Journal-Constitution, USA Today, The Guardian, the Daily Mail, and the Independent from the UK. It has magazines like News, yes, sorry, Newsweek, The Economist, Forbes, Rolling Stone, like all kinds of things that you want to be, have people be informed and not just, you know, reading, believing whatever they read online. You can actually read the full newspaper. There's no charge to the cardholders. You can read them on your desktop or on a laptop or mobile with an app. And so, anyway, and that, we also have e-books and audiobooks through several sources. So if all of this is too much to remember, just check the e-library section of our website or ready, come in and talk to one of our librarians. We'd be happy to show you and demonstrate how to use the, all these resources. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Chair, with your permission, I'd like to take two things out of order under contracts.
Sure.
One motion.
Did you have anything?
No, nothing more from me.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the following 2024 Community Preservation Act grant agreements. One for the Harwich Fire Association, 203 Bank Street Fire Housing for $400,000, and the Harwich Police Soccer Club Street Soccer Pitch for $48,700.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Dawn?
Yeah, Madam Chair, is David still here? Yeah, he's over there. That's tough for you to hide. Just a quick question, because you mentioned a lot of things the last time you were here. Are you, at this point, aware of what your working capital is going to be for the current cycle? Because I know you're entering into another one right now.
We are, and- Long way to wait. We have a pretty good idea, Dawn, of what our numbers are.
The question was, has the Finance Department given you any figures?
No.
Okay.
That's what we're waiting for.
Yeah, and I believe that's being worked on. Joe, I'm just looking over to you because I recall seeing-
Correct. There's a requirement through the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, where the reporting needs to be sent to the Commonwealth, I believe, by September 15th. So interim Treasurer Collector Ed Spellman, working with interim Finance Director Eric Kincher for working on all of those book closing items. But those are required to be done by the 15th, and they're endeavoring to do that.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I follow up on that at a later date?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So that was five to zero.
And Madam Chair, you have the agreements coming around.
Yeah.
The other parties have already signed. And then just for everyone's benefit, once these are executed, that allows us to put in requests for payments to those organizations. So we'll work on that this week.
Great, thank you.
And we thank them for their patience and congratulate them on their agreements.
All good news. Can we move on to the consent agenda? And just want to note one thing on the minutes that, and I'm fine with going forward with these, just, and I can get the changes over to Danielle and Natasha. But on page two of our minutes from August 5th, when we talk about Hack and Elisa Magnata being here, just, we have a typo there, but I want to make sure that it's included that I did advise Elisa that we were not included officially in any process of vetting the program. So just, that's my one comment. I don't know if any other board members have any other additions, revisions, otherwise. That's my only one. So if I can get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as written with the change noted by the Chair.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero, Joe. New business?
Madam Chair, item A, affirm the appointment of Randy Spears as the Building Commissioner effective September 23, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Pete?
Question, Joe. I saw the document pertaining to, you know, conditional offer. And I'm wondering if, and I could be off base here, but should the-
...in our control, but that alone would make a difference. So, doing some things like that, paralleling that, putting together a more comprehensive, longer-term plan that involves sidewalks, that involves street lighting. There's some very easy solutions, low-cost solutions for crosswalk lighting that involves solar. You don't have to wire them, you never have to maintain them, you support them, they shine down beautifully, they make such a difference. And as we know, some of the other communities in the Cape have done some of these things, and, you know, we could obviously talk to them. So there's a lot of opportunities for us to be bold, to make a generational change. I mean, this is gonna impact me, but, you know, five, seven years from now, I'm probably not gonna own my properties anymore. I have an exit strategy that involves, hopefully, selling my properties to the businesses that operate in them, then going back to a community where the shop owner is also the property owner, so when they roll up their crates and open their doors and sweep their stoops, they also own the property, which creates a loyalty to the town, makes them less transient, hopefully builds them personal wealth, and makes them care more about the community they're in. I think going back to that is gonna be essential, and then I spend the next 10 years after that enjoying the town. So, anyway, I went off on a tangent with that, but I'm just trying to give you a sense of where I see this community. It's only 500 yards. I mean, we can do it, and I think we can create the quintessential first-class seaside community, the best one on Cape Cod. And it's in our grasp, it's there, we've got, some of them are here, some of them aren't here. I talked to, of those 40 parcels approximately, I talked to the people that represent 22 of them, that also represent approximately 35 businesses in 21, both short and long-term residential tenants, all on Route 28, all in that section. And to a person, they support and said, "What can I do?" Roll up our sleeves. And, you know, you've got me and you've got Paul Manning, we're only gonna be here for so long, so there's a window, in some ways. I mean, when you think about, you know, how do we get things done, right?
Right.
And Paul and I have talked quite a bit about all this, and he's aware of all this going on. Paul's a property owner, I probably shouldn't even be using names, but... So, I'm here, ready, willing, and able to do whatever it takes to participate, to be involved. I'm a resident of Harwich Port, I live right around the corner from all of this, I'm the easiest guy in the town to find, believe me. And I'm, I just think there's a lot of opportunity here for us, again, to be bold and to create the first-class, best-quality town center on the Cape.
Thank you. Thank you for putting together your document as well, it's helpful, and I think we all expressed the same sentiment, in the sense of increased safety. I was down there in the wintertime helping an elderly lady cross, and really, we almost got hit, and that was, that was the winter, so... Don, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we go further, I appreciate your coming in tonight. The horse is kind of out of the barn again for this year. We continue to do this. I was wondering if we could put together some sort of workshop, because there's also a lot of onion layers here that are involved. I think you missed one also, the, we have each year an annual meeting with all the liquor license holders about what their expectations, and part of that has to do with how you close down at the end of the night, and concerns from public safety about where people can pour across the street, poor choice of words, but, and get an Uber. So, there's a bunch of different things, but before we even start talking about infrastructure, there's stuff, I absolutely agree with you, that we could do, but we have to start thinking about it in September after you get back, so that we can have something in place for next year, because I feel deja vu here, in large measure, that we're in August and we're talking about, gee, I wish we could've done something for Harwich Port this year.
Right.
Including the talk about even having a shuttle bus. So, we had a lot of conversation over three years, to which we've done almost nothing.
Agreed. We've talked a lot about shuttles, and I think it would be helpful. Go ahead, Dennis.
Right, so, and there are some solutions, Elise, that I, and members of the community here, ideas that we have about parking options. So, a work, something that engages, that's why I'm saying, let's get the people with the boots on the ground that, you know, for me, it's hand-to-hand combat every day in that community, I'm, you know, everything from hanging gutta to, you know, negotiating major lease, I mean, I'm involved with all of it. So, we have some good ideas. I, it was November of 2017, I met with the then-town administrator and planning director at my lot in 575 Route 28, and offered it to the town at that point, said, "Until I develop this lot, you can use this for parking, for free." No different than I just said, you know, in my memo about trying to use it for an Uber stop, at least for the rest of the summer. I followed up with him, he eventually was gone, she was gone a couple of weeks later, I think she went to Chatham. So, it, I just felt like there was a gap between what was happening at 732 Main Street, that's the right address here, and what was happening in the bad streets of Harwich Port.
Yes.
I just think there's, there's an opportunity there, but we need to be, you know, engage us, involve us, you know, there's a lot of opportunities, and a lot of things that we see, that we can help come up with some of these solutions. I'm not there at 1:30 in the morning, I'll admit, when the bars are letting out, but I know what happens. And I think there are ways to work with the restaurants, the community, the property owners, the parking lot, people that control the parking lots, as we know, the banks are an option potentially.
Right.
But there are solutions there.
Yes.
We just need to get in a room together and work on them.
I think that's what...
And they're not hard solutions.
No, and I think that's what we need to do, is to that point, is that we need to have a group meeting, and we'll include traffic safety as well, and start that conversation, and get those deliverables, then go to the state and incorporate, you know, a meeting with them to see...
And I'm happy to be involved if it, if, you know, I know I'm not a member of the board, but I'm happy to certainly, to...
Help as well.
To participate in any aspect of that, whether it's with the MassDOT, or it's just in the community.
No, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any other comments?
I'd like to hear that.
Oh, Joe?
Just if I could, as we have this conversation, did want to advise the board and everyone present, staff has been working and looking at different options in that area. The DPW director and I, with energy committee representative, were there two years ago, as you know, we're working on a potential electric vehicle charging station, so that is known as a Level 2.2 ports. That would take up two of the 77 spaces that are in the schoolhouse lot. We're also working with VHB, they're doing analysis of the several different locations, they're aware of Harwich Port. We asked them to look at not only the impact of the charging station, but also identifying at least two spaces in the meeting, the schoolhouse lot for the ride-share program. And so, as I understand it through staff, we have 77 spaces in the main lot, as we're aware of, the 24 spaces off to the, to the east, if I'm saying that right, that we have, the town has an agreement back to 2016 with...
TD Bank.
Thank you, TD Bank. So it's a year-over-year situation, it's still in effect, but those are 24 additional spaces. I know that we've talked as a town with the butters in the back of that, I believe the town had a study done back in 2016 on that. So we have that data and material, but we are working on, obviously, the electric vehicle charging station as a directive of the board, but also the ride-share in those locations, and we're trying to identify other traffic mitigations through shuttles and other things like that, so we may have more data coming in the fall.
Great, thank you.
If that helps, thank you.
And I also, the earlier email I was referencing about the gentleman, his name was Joe Scribby, I'm probably butchering the last name, but asked that I read his, his email to us. So, again, on the 19th of August, he's, he asked for this request, and he sent this on August 1st, and he said, "Dear Select Board, on Wednesday, July 30th, my family and I had a fabulous time at the block party in Harwich, Harwich Port Center, got candy at the candy shop, had a nice booth-up hot stove for dinner, and decided to continue the fun up to the go-carts. My wife and I pulled the wagon with my four-year-old and one-year-old in it, it was a gorgeous night, and decided to walk up Route 28 to Sisson Road, which is about a half a mile away. Halfway into the walk, the sidewalk without any warning ended. I decided to run with the wagon up to the next parcel of land, expecting the sidewalk to continue, when I got there, still no sidewalk, no streetlights, no breakdown lane, not even an area of grass for me to get off the street. I was already committed to the walk, and there was no turning back at this point. With my flashlight on my phone, I was forced to do a full sprint, pulling the wagon along a curvy, dark, hilly road into oncoming traffic, just to get to a safe spot. People on vacation would like, would like to think it's like any other major road in the state of Massachusetts that has at least one sidewalk. All this crazy money the state's spending for these insane bike lanes, I think it's pretty reasonable to ask for 3/10 of a mile to complete the sidewalk out of town. The area that has no sidewalk, sidewalk, crosswalks, has a pizza shop, bumper cars, batting cages, zip line, mini golf trampolines, ice cream store, and most importantly, go-carts. I'm amazed that no one hasn't, has been killed on this road already. I contacted the State Traffic Department, they asked me to get the ball started with the Harwich Select Board first. We need a traffic study done as soon as possible. If someone from the board would drive by, I would appreciate it. The area is from Dairy Queen down to the curb in the road, the curve in the road at Jake Rooney's. The State Traffic Department telephone number, and he provides it, and he said, 'Thank you, concerned dad, small business supporter of your town.' And on that note, as you've mentioned, you know, we have our contractor, VHB, looking at the Queen Anne traffic that we've talked extensively about, as well as Harwich Port, so we'll be getting an update on that in the coming month or so, I think. Do you think months about it?
Yes, however, they were confining Harwich Port to Bank Street to South Street, as we've been talking.
Yeah, so...
So I'll follow up with Steve and see what it would take to get that other end of it incorporated.
Great, thank you, Joe, that'd be helpful. Anybody else want to speak to traffic?
Hi. My name's Bob Bench, I live on Mile Street. I'm here to first praise the Harwich Police Department and the Harwich Fire Department for the way they responded to a terrible accident at Mile Street and South Street two, two Saturday mornings ago. Two cars were destroyed. Fortunately, two teenage boys walked out of their car okay. The other car flipped and flipped, and somehow she undid her seatbelt and got out of the car, but she was taken away in an ambulance. Horrific accident. The first responders cleaned it up in an hour and a half, it was terrific the way they responded. The accident wasn't terrific, it was the third accident that day at Miles and South. The problem is South Street, it's a raceway, always has been a raceway, no one wants to deal with it. I wrote a memo 18 months ago to the Transportation Committee, laying out all sorts of proposals to deal with South Street, never got an answer. On your bigger picture of Harwich Port, Harwich Port is a residential community occupied by a small number of commercial properties. It's a residential community. And that residential community is finding itself in a traffic loop. So we have 18-wheel food trucks coming up Mile Street. We have buses coming up Mile Street. Meanwhile, there's people, there's bicycles, there's all sorts of people walking on those streets, and have to get out of the way of these vehicles. So when you consider what you're doing from South Street to Bank Street, please consider maybe from the overlook to the Bank of America, and that's South, that's Harwich Port. It isn't a bunch of hanky-tonks in the middle of town. There's a lot more going on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm Bob Coen from Pleasant Street, and I'm gonna echo a fair amount of what Bob Bench just told you, but I missed the earlier conversations about the traffic initiative, so I'm not sure to what extent traffic on Pleasant Street and the north, the whole north of 28 neighborhood has, plays into what you're talking about here. But increasingly, not just on Mile Street, but also on Pleasant Street, we're having a fair amount of difficulty. A dog was killed there last year, mailboxes have been moved down by out-of-control drivers. A neighbor told me he recently saw two cars racing side-by-side on Pleasant Street. Bob Bench has told me today that about his, the three accidents two weeks ago, and just yesterday afternoon, in front of my house, I saw a seven, eight-year-old kid on a scooter almost get hit by a pickup truck. These aren't typical events, but residents in the whole neighborhood are too often having close calls and feel threatened on pretty much a daily basis. So I'm completely in favor of any and all safety measures on Main Street, but I want to make sure you're aware that slowdowns on Route 28 have a direct downstream impact on the north of 28 neighborhood, we get that much more traffic. As I mentioned in my email to you, we have a petition pending for a four-way stop sign that crossed Pleasant, with the Traffic Safety Committee, so I'm assuming that's the right approach to go. But it sounds like we need to address the intersection of South and Miles, and Pleasant as well, and maybe look into reducing the speed limit to 25 throughout the village or that neighborhood. I don't, I don't know what your leeway is there. Increasing signage perhaps, and maybe some other traffic calming measures. So, I guess my question to you is, how do we get this done? How do we approach this? Is this something that could be included with what you're talking about tonight?
Yeah, I think, I think that this full scope, we need to have a meeting, we need to get the different players together and start this conversation and come up with, you know, I'm just gonna, for simplicity's sake, say a top 10 of wants, and, you know, I think that they would be the most safety-driven items, and then figure out how we go from there to get them done.
So, should we, I'm hoping that the Traffic Safety Committee will take up our petition and...
Well, and we're gonna include traffic safety in that discussion, so we can talk about the items that they've, they've got, you know, one thing that, just, just to talk about how we're trying to address different safety-traffic issues in town, we're working on the, as everybody's calling it, the hope-and-go over here on Chatham Road where it meets 39. And so, that's something that came out of traffic safety and larger discussions, so I think...
So it migrates to you guys, or...
So, yeah, we're, we're a part of the, the process, and so I think the next thing we'll do is, you know, I'm gonna be out of town till the end of September, so we'll start getting that conversation going, so that we can get something in the works and truly make some improvements for next summer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Richard Wastak, Harwich Port. I've had a front bird's-eye view of Route 28 in Harwich Port for 20 years, I have three businesses out of my building, and I want to commend both the fire and the police departments for the safety they've had during the Harwich strolls this summer. They've done an exceptional job with a lot of people there. It's summer on Cape Cod, and here we are, talking about traffic, talking about safety. It's like deja vu over and over and over again. We had the parking scenario, we had a great committee talk about parking, really not a whole lot was done. Cross Street could be one-way from 28, that's been a horror show of backing the traffic up and slowing the traffic, which causes people to go into the side neighborhoods, because it stopped back almost as far as Witchmere coming into town. So people find alternative routes to get there. There are some simple solutions. Put a task force together, you know, and have some teeth this time, and have it so that reports back to the Select Board by November or December, so we're not talking again next summer about the same thing over and over again, and nothing gets done. There are some changes. I'd love to put a crosswalk sign out, but the trucks coming out of my driveway knock them over, so I can't put one there. But, each business downtown right now can put some spotlights in the front of their businesses facing down to the sidewalks to increase lighting immediately, without taking any action from the town. So I'd encourage all of your businesses, like mine, let's get some additional lighting on the sidewalks to help, especially near those sidewalks. But, Madam Chair, having been there for 20 years, gonna be there till I'm gone, happy to assist in a task force that looks at this, as long as we get something done.
No, I agree. I mean, there's no point in just continuously talking about it. It's the same way that we've talked about, you know, the dedicated drop-off pickup, you know, I mean, we have to do something that helps the police increase safety, because, you know, they do the best they can, but we need to make improvements.
So let's do it, so we're not here next August talking about the same thing.
Agreed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk about any traffic-related issue in Harwich Port? Jeff?
Yeah, if I could, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being here and telling us what's on your mind. I'm gonna jump around a little bit. I would like a definitive answer if Harwich truly has the right to modify Route 28 from a safety standpoint, absence of town, absence of state involvement, or what, what involvement does the state have with us here in Harwich, trying to make that section of Route 28 more safe? The crosswalks are unsafe, late-night crowds are spilling into Route 28, that's unsafe. The lighting is awful, in my opinion. I will say to the three people who just stood up and spoke that, interestingly enough, Linda Sebula and I am the liaison to the Traffic Safety Committee. Linda and I are in communication about these issues. I get emails pretty often, and my first phone call is to Linda, and we have a nice discussion about it. And Cross Street becoming a one-way has come up quite a bit over the last couple of weeks for me. Pleasant Street and Cross Street, four, stop sign, four-way stop sign, has come up quite a bit for me. And the speed issues. And I, I've spoken to our chief of police, and, you know, trying to be everywhere all the time is, is difficult. We only have so many resources to police speed. I can, I can tell you just from driving around Harwich all day long, every day, seven days a week, they're speeding absolutely everywhere. It doesn't matter what street you're on, there are people speeding all the time. That's the beauty of Harwich in the summer, and, and not only in the summer, but year-round. So, I, my last conversation with Linda is, was about a task force, was about how can we move the needle? And this is an opportunity for us, I say that as the collective us, administration, Select Board, residents, business owners, everybody who has an interest in public safety, to have our words match our actions, and, and put something together that, like, like Madam Chair said, has some teeth, and that, that can also be enforced by our police department. And, yeah, our police and fire are second to none, but reducing the, the need for them to ever come out of their buildings, I think, is what everybody's talking about here. So, as a traffic safety liaison, I'm on board. I know Linda Sebula is on board, and we just need a little bit, a little more time to put some, put some things together.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, I'm Pamela Kendall, 86, Old Chatham Road, and because we are talking about traffic safety, I'd like to talk about Main Street Extension, and what is going on down there as far as traffic safety. They're looking at putting in a large project down there. Having family that has owned property down there, my being Kendles, also my grandmother also owning the number 54 Main Street Extension property, and my in-laws owning the 54 Main Street Extension property, as well as the bogs across the way. There were promises made back in, I want to say 99, somewhere around there, when the original One Love Lane, well, at that time, I think it was known as Five Love Lane, project went in, and none of the promises that were made at that time have been fulfilled up to this point. I'm kind of curious if anybody's looking at that.
1999, you said?
Yes, I can even go to note that the town of Dennis was proposing an alternative access into the backside of that Dennis parcel at that time, and the Chamberlain property. Even as far as saying that the roadway mitigation included providing police enforcement of local speed limits on Main Street, and reconstruction of a portion of, of Main Street to flatten the curve in front of 54 Main Street Extension, which was never done. I don't know if this is the time to bring up the rest of what I'd like to address, but seeing as we were talking about traffic and safety, I thought now might be a good time to address that.
So, we have talked a lot about traffic on Old Queen Anne and the different studies that we're also looking to gather, the information from VHB, so I see that. You're welcome to, to talk about it, just to let you know, we're working and waiting on data through VHB, not only for Harwich Port, as I mentioned, but also for Queen Anne, and, and the other areas we talked about, Main, Old Main and Main Street Extension.
Right.
But, we don't currently have that data yet, so I anticipate that that will be another agenda item within the next month or so, so you're welcome to talk about it then, or you can certainly...
That would be great. Having living, been, living on Old Chatham for the last 35 years, and, you know, with the ambulances and the use of the Dennis municipalities, having to use the road that I live on to access back there, it has been an issue. There's a lot of issues back there that I would like to address, but I thought now might be the time, because you were talking about traffic safety, because there were a lot of promises made back when that property actually initially went in, potentially going to have Dennis access back there through their own town, which I also have copies of, but that could be at another time. But while we are on the subject of traffic safety, I did want to bring that up.
No, that's fine, and...
And I know that, that at some point, somebody is looking for, potentially, if, if the town of Harwich has not appealed the Dennis building decision on that property, if they are, and if there will be a direct regional impact study done, as well as a traffic study at that four-way stop.
Yes.
There will be.
I, I mean, I anticipate that anybody doing any project on, on Queen Anne is going to have to do a traffic study for that whole area.
I'm talking about the Main Street Extension.
Yeah, well, that would include that as well.
Okay.
I mean, we would want to see that information, and we're, and like I said, we're looking for VHB to gather information for us at those pinch-point areas.
Right, because I've been told that the deconstruction of some of, or some kind of demolition is already being done back there.
At the Love Lane project?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could drag us back to Harwich Port for a second.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
I understand what Jeff's saying, except that three of us have been here for various iterations of putting together task forces and everything. I'm concerned that we get paralyzed by trying to solve every problem, so that we solve no problems. And I really honestly think that there are degrees of difficulty in some of these things, but some, some of them aren't as difficult as others, and we really need to start agending specific things that we can do without spending a ton of money, without routing buses or anything. But I can say to you, I used to teach driver's ed, there's no fewer than 13 designated crosswalks between Bank Street and Dairy Queen. 13. So, I mean, one would argue that, I don't know whether the state would buy putting up signs as you enter the district, saying "high-traffic area," which would be a simple thing to be able to pull off, but we've got to start thinking about, we've been talking about making Cross Street one-way for how many years? Four? Something like that?
I don't know, I didn't hear that one.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, things preceded you. I would hate to have us continue to have blue-ribbon task forces that come up with, you know, complex solutions, and we don't take any of them up. We really need to at least, it's not gonna take jet scientists to do a few of these things. I'm just arguing that the time is now, because we're heading out of the summer, we can actually create a new context for the next summer on some of these simple things, while we're working on a bigger, longer-term solution. Otherwise, we're waiting, you know, for everything, so nothing happens.
No, I agree. I mean, you know, I don't think we're gonna solve every issue, but I think that's why we need to come up with a priority list, and it can't be a long list, it has to be, you know, we've hit on some of the, some of them tonight, so I think we just need to...
I'm sure we have it in a file drawer somewhere.
I'm sure we do.
Just real quick, if I may, through you, Madam Chair, I agree partly with, with what you're saying, Don, but there has to be a point where we begin from, and no different than the Brooks Academy, we put together a group of people who are going to come to the table and discuss what's important. We did a nice job with Cross Street earlier this past year, or last year. It's not done by any means, I still think, and, and that was the idea, was get us through the summer and then discuss it again in November or December, so that one's already in place and, and being discussed. I don't, I don't think it's a big lift to get a... I don't think it's a big lift to get a group of people together to bounce around some ideas, but if you have another way that we can begin the process, I'd be all ears. But I want to start yesterday. I don't want, I don't want, Dennis, you emailed me a year and a half ago, and I'm embarrassed to sit here in front of you right now saying that you had to come here and stand up and go through the whole thing again. So I believe Harwich is getting busier, and it's becoming more dangerous. And the longer that we sit here idle and don't do anything, I think we're just setting ourselves up for problems.
Jeff? Michael?
Nothing up this Terry.
You have somebody on the screen.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I just had a quick comment if I could.
So the only thing is, I'm afraid people can't hear you, so let me just see if there's...
Can you hear me?
Well done.
Can you hear me now?
Matt, do you have a, do you have a mic?
Wireless mic.
She can come to this table.
Yeah, there. There, that's a good idea. And Terry?
I certainly can. I can do almost anything.
Get right up there. I'm going to shut this thing behind you.
No marathon, though.
Okay. Do you want to sit, Terry?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
No care behind you anymore, Terry.
So I would like to add, I think it's very positive about your approach to designated drop-off areas. However, please do not forget, it is very important to include ADA requirements in this. And I'll go one step further and say, there are many elderly people in this town that are not perfectly designated ADA, but I'll tell you, they are. And if you're going to do designated spots, maybe one spot in front of each commercial business could be that drop-off for an ADA person. And have it marked right on, right on the pavement. That would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for this topic?
Teresa Johnson, North Harwich. It's my understanding that Pine Oaks Village has submitted their request to the state for their proposed development on Queen Anne Road, and...
The state hasn't, the state hasn't notified the town as of yet that they submitted. They're waiting for that.
So I was just concerned, I didn't know how quickly the state's going to process it through and how long our traffic study is going to take.
They have to notify the town, and they have not to date notified the town, correct?
Correct. We've received no notification on the project eligibility letter, PEL. When we receive notification, the town must respond within 30 days. The chair has already indicated within that timeframe, there will be a select board meeting whereby we will have, the expectation is, we'll have all staff that's been weighing in on the project, we'll have their findings present for the board to have, there'll be an open discussion for the community to have. And then as part of that, because they're looking for the state, they, the applicant, are looking for the state to help with funding, we're also required to be part of a site visit. So there would also be some element of outdoors near that location. But as of this afternoon at 5:00 PM, we still haven't received notice. So we're anticipating it, and we're primed to respond within the 30-day requirement.
I just didn't know how long our traffic study would take, that the town's going to miss the boat of holding them accountable for the traffic problem it's going to create.
Well, they're going to have to, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I will never yield to the chair. First, they're required to do a traffic study that we can analyze. We're actively doing our own traffic study, and we expect that beyond the project eligibility letter, they will still be going through the 40B requirement through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the town will also have an opportunity then to talk about traffic impacts and to potentially have that as part of the permitting process. So we'll have several opportunities to weigh in on traffic and several opportunities to offer our own data, separate from theirs, on traffic.
Because they did a traffic study, which was absolutely a joke. That's why we needed to do our own.
So the whole vetting process will come, once we get the official notification from the state. We went through a similar process, which, I can't believe I'm actually...
Chloe's Path?
Thank you. Chloe's Path, where, you know, we had issues with the traffic study there, too. So we understand what you're saying, and we wouldn't just take it verbatim by the report.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit confused. You had answered to her question. Has there not, for the Main Street Extension, has there not been a traffic study or something issued for that project?
When you're saying the Main Street Extension, you mean the Love Lane project?
Correct.
They did do a traffic study as well. Dennis shared it.
And that was done when?
I don't have the date of it, but I can certainly get you that information. It's public.
Oh, okay, because I couldn't find any of that anywhere.
If you go to the Dennis Planning Board page, they have all the documents there. They're all public.
Okay. And so Harwich is okay in accepting that project? Is that what you're saying?
We're looking to talk to an outside counsel on that project, but in terms of any type of legal action this town could take. But just to be clear, the town of Dennis didn't seek outside counsel. Their planning board asked their select board to seek outside counsel, and their select board did not vote to approve that.
Okay. And have we filed an appeal for that building permit?
So it's not our building, it's not, it's not in our town.
Okay.
So it's not our building permit.
So we're allowing Dennis to use those roadways, even though at various times, Chief of Police, Fire Department have found that the use of that roadway for those purposes is not in the public's best interest.
So the police and, the police and fire have never said that there's an issue...
I have that right here.
Using the road, but...
Back in 1999.
So possibly in the, in the past. I'm not saying, I'm just saying currently, we haven't, and we have no action at this point. We're having outside counsel, we have a meeting to discuss whether or not we would go forward with any...
And have we actually retained outside counsel for that project?
We are meeting, we are meeting with an outside counsel this week.
Okay. And then when that, will that be open for public...
Madam Chair, if I may, this is not on the agenda of discussion.
No, you're right.
You and I spoke about this. If you want to call me for an update tomorrow, I will take the call and give you an update.
Okay.
But we have got to move back on to the agenda.
Absolutely. I just didn't know if there was going to be a public hearing on that.
No, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you. So on that note, I'm going to stop the discussion on the Howardport traffic, because I think we've got a clear idea of where we're going with that. And thank you, Michael. So now, Item E, discussion on the annual non-resident taxpayer meeting for the annual non-resident taxpayer department videos. So, Joe, this item came up previously. We talked about reinstating it, so I'll go to you about what the status is.
I don't have a status, I dare say.
No.
And again, my, my experience here does not tie into, I've never participated in a non-resident taxpayer discussion, as you've done in the past. My frame of reference is post-COVID. We have relied upon department heads to provide video vignettes. We post them on the website. I believe the first time we did that, we aired them at a meeting. Future iterations, the board opted to have it posted on the website. So we can certainly do that again, but I, my understanding is, your topic tonight is for the five of you to discuss whether you want to do something other than what's been done in the last three years.
Well, we also, I received, I don't think it was sent to all of you, but Mark Helleher shared some different documents literally just this afternoon. I haven't even looked at them in terms of, I know he mentioned going to different towns. I don't know if it was Chatham or Orleans, but just to share with you, and I'll forward these to you as well. But back to the discussion on going back to a non-resident taxpayer meeting, and what way do you want to go about it if we want to reinstate it? Any discussion, Michael?
For this year, it's way too late to have a non-resident taxpayer meeting given the date.
Right.
So I would support the videos this year to give people time to absorb them when they get back home, and they can certainly call with any questions. Next year, I think we should go back to a non-resident taxpayer meeting, where they come to us and voice their concerns, opinions, and whatnot. So I think this year is clear that we cannot pull together in a timely fashion a non-resident taxpayer meeting.
Thank you, Michael. Joe?
Well, I would just ask what the board thinks would be the right time of year to do it. Like, early summer?
We used to do it in July.
In July.
Through you, Madam Chair. We used to do it in July.
Right.
Yeah, I completely support that. I think, Pete, you brought that up last meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
They all disagree with me. It was early August.
I remember it being summer, but I wasn't sure.
That's the consensus, right?
I'd support it. I think it's a great idea.
You like August?
I like July or August.
Don?
I prefer to Pete first.
No, obviously, I think it's something that we should reinstitute. It gives the non-resident taxpayers an opportunity to come in and share their thoughts and concerns with us. And not that the videos are a bad idea, but clearly, they don't have an opportunity to engage with those videos. So I support it, whether it's July or August, I'm open.
Okay. Thank you. Don?
Madam Chair, if the question is whether we should do videos or a meeting, we did neither. So just for the record for this year, so we kind of dropped the ball as a town, not us. But we should get videos up as soon as possible on the website, but towards actually doing a physical meeting, it's just depressing to pick up a newspaper and see that Chatham's holding its non-resident taxpayer meeting, and we're not holding anything. So, I mean, there are questions that people have, and we brought up COVID. I think that's an excellent point of reference. There are a lot of people who are here as summer residents now who were not here five or six years ago, and they have no real way of navigating what's going on in the town, because COVID kind of distorted everything, too. I think it's reasonable for people who have decided that they were going to buy properties here but not be residents, that they're given some sort of navigating plan about where you need to go to do what. And we're not helping that.
No, I think we need to get back on track, so that's the consensus.
Is it reasonable to get videos up sometime in the next couple of weeks, maybe?
So I can talk to the department heads tomorrow. We have our monthly meeting. I'll certainly work with Jamie and the staff at the Harwich Channel to get a sense of their bandwidth, but yes, we can do these videos for this year for sure. My question for you folks for future events, are there civic associations or anything? I've not come across any. However, I've been in other towns where we've had actual non-resident taxpayer associations, so we knew who we could directly invite. Again, I have no frame of reference here, so if you know of any groups. And obviously, we can talk more about it as we plan for next year.
Yeah, I don't recall any, but...
It would have to be really under the radar, because I don't think any of us know.
Yeah, no.
Very good.
Thank you. Now, Item F, if I can get a motion.
Item F, vote to authorize the chair to execute the certifying statement for the authority to file, allows the, provides the authorization for the town administrator to execute state revolving fund documents related to the Route 28 subway construction project.
Second.
Moved in second. And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Who is this?
Me.
Item G, discuss and vote on the updated waterways committee charge.
We put this back in the package.
Draft in the package for board comments. This is the first time we've reviewed this one.
Does any board member have any specific comments on the charge?
I would just like a redlined version.
Oh, previous to?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get that?
Sure.
Great. All right, so we'll bring it back in the fourth? Is that good, or later?
Bring it back. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board members. Redlined version is an old charge. All we're really going to do is submit, this is the new format and the new charge. Nothing's changing, there's still advisory, we're just putting the scope back out there in different words. But I will get you where we started.
I appreciate it.
Tom, G, F?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, if you would. I think one of the central things that they do through the years is a harbor management plan review. I'd kind of like it if that's, like, listed as a specific item, because it's a big one, and it's one that we expect to get input from them to us.
Okay, so we'll bring it. Jeff, did you have any comments?
No.
Bring it back. Now, a motion on Item H.
In closing, I'll work with the harbor master and the waterways committee and bring back the old copy and my few changes that I saw.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Michael. Item H, approve the photographic consent agreement between the town of Harwich and Marina I LLC.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm faulted. Delayed. Let's see. Curious, did this, and I know we got approval from the harbor master, did this go before the waterways?
Harbor Master, they're getting a copy of the letter, and we have a meeting Wednesday.
Okay, but they didn't opine whether they supported it or not?
They did not.
Okay. Do we know if there's a fee for people to access this app?
Not a fee to us. I don't know whether there's a fee, once you go onto Apple Pay, whether you're going to have to pay for it or not. I don't know.
Not sure, okay. And I know I'm getting a little granular. Do we know why, and I'm trying to scroll to it as I'm reading my notes, but do we know why the, I believe it's the last section, the last paragraph, it talks about a partnered marina, and it's, partner and marina are both in cap, the P and the M are both capitalized, and it's underlined. Do we know what that stands for? I didn't see any other reference to partner and marina in that document.
I, I don't know. I mean, let me see. Thank you. I think he just means, you know, by participating in this app, we're a partner, you know.
Yeah, just, where they're both capitalized and underlined, to me, it means something else, and perhaps I'm overthinking it, but, you know, when we have a document that requires signature, I tend to scrutinize them. Because, again, marina is used throughout, you know, lowercase, so that caught my eye. And again, assuming, assuming, the fee, the fee is actually a question I'd like an answer to, to be honest with you, because I got a little chuckle when they told us we didn't have to pay to be part of this. So I found that kind of amusing. But if the, if the, if the board does agree...
Why would that be amusing?
In my opinion, I don't know that we'd entertain paying to be part of this as a community.
I see. Yeah. I think he was just trying to make sure they're not charging communities to participate. It's strictly voluntary.
Which is why I wish they included the language whether consumers needed to pay for their app or not. But again...
I mean, this is just a nice-to-have thing for the boater.
Yeah. And I don't disagree, but again...
You don't want to participate, that's fine. I just think it's...
Nope. And I'm not saying I don't want to participate, but when we have what I term as a contract in front of us, I, again, just past practice, I go through them in detail and try to understand exactly what, I'm putting my signature on. The other piece that I would comment on, if the board, again, proceeds, and I don't know if it's in the hard copy, but where it says town of Harwich, that language needs to be corrected, because it, Harwich, town of Harwich, at the bottom for signatures. And my other two cents would be that the Marina I LLC signature is on the same page as the board of selectmen, as opposed to a separate page. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Excuse me. Yep.
1899 for a year.
For the consumer.
For the consumer.
Don, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just, especially given Pete's concerns, is there any time urgency that this has to be signed now instead of two weeks from now, if we could take it up again?
No, not at all. Again, this was just, he approached us, I seem to think it's kind of a nice tool for the boater. of a nice tool for the boater. There is no rush. I mean, he's just asking, hey, can we be, you want to be part of this? I looked at their website. I checked their tutorial. It's really a neat look at if you've never been to a harbor before. You have video of the channel coming in. You've got a video of the slip locations. It's just a great thing to have for the boater. And it doesn't cost us anything. So there is no rush.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yep.
All right. So we'll
Madam Chair, this is a tool that most boaters use.
Yeah.
But in Nantucket, we use it. We use it on Vineyard. We use it on Black Island. We use it everywhere.
I thought it was a great tool.
There's a lot of other things besides just channels in there. We get wind out of it. We get weather out of it. We get fishing reports in there. There's a lot of information. So the consent is obviously, I understand your comments about the, Pete's comments about the contract, but the, but this is a pretty standard tool, and they're just looking for our permission to allow people to use it in our town.
Sure, sure.
Just to be clear, you know, it did go through town council. So I mean, they scrutinized it and said it was okay.
I also, when I read this, thought, what a great tool, not having a boat. I would think that if I had a boat, this would be an app I would use because safety-wise, I want as much information if I'm unfamiliar, when, if I can get that by using this app.
Absolutely.
If I could, I, so I'm just going to ask, because I'm not familiar with this, but in my world with golf courses, this is what we do. I think it's a great idea to map what we as consumers are using. I'm not sure, though, that it's giving, I think what they're asking for here, if I'm reading it correctly, is just for consent to take photographs of our waterways.
Correct.
Right? It's got nothing to do with usage by the consumer. This is simply to take
Come to our facility and
Come to our facility.
and pictures of our Marina.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I could, I think the converse, the converse of that would be if John, excuse me, if the harbor master, if the waterway committees or anyone else noticed that there was this material somewhere, the town would seek, or the town may contemplate seeking action against the user. So I believe that's where the harbor master's coming from. That is certainly the way that we conveyed it to council.
Right.
And to John's point, that's the way that council reviewed that document. I agree with the scrivener's errors and all that, though.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess my question is with the corrections, because I understand the different ones Pete mentioned. I saw them, too, because it says Harwich, Town of Harwich, you know, stuff like that. If we could just clean that up, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to vote to move forward with it with those corrections.
Moved.
It's already been moved.
You're under your motion and a second to accept.
Yeah. What's that amendment?
Adding the amendment.
Right.
And Madam Chair, if I could, I understand the benefits of having this. When a document comes before me for my signature, I'd just like to go through it thoroughly. And I'm not saying this isn't a worthwhile cause. But when I see the term partnered Marina underlined with partnered Marina both in cap, and the P and the M both capitalized, to me, that means it means something. It's not just we're partnered with them. It's a partnered Marina. And I would just like to have a definition of that. Again, in all likelihood, I think, you know, this concept has my support. Again, I think it's a great tool for the boaters to have out there. And we'd be probably silly not to approve it. But to understand the actual language, I just think is incumbent upon us to do that prior to putting our autograph on a piece of paper. That's all.
So we can certainly ask council to just give us that feedback on that wording, partnered Marina.
It's probably the folks at Marina I that need to give us the definition, you know, through council, but sure.
Yeah. But I would think that if council reviewed this, that that would have been a question for that.
I don't know that council focused on that. I appreciate where the member's coming from.
Yeah.
I agree with that concept. There's a, the way I would read that with the underline is there is a term that is undefined within the contract.
Right.
So I understand that concept completely.
So let's get an answer to that in particular.
Sure, absolutely. And if the board's okay with it, I would work with the harbor master. He and I would work with council. I'd like to be able, on behalf of the town, ask them some questions as well.
Right.
To partner with John to get an answer for this. But I appreciate, this is a contract. There's no doubt about it.
Right.
And that's a term, and it is fair to ask for the definition of the term. Because it could have greater ramifications.
So we'll get the definition of the term. We'll get the corrections made, and then we'll, and you two will work with council, and then we'll bring it back.
That's why I asked.
Is this a boilerplate where we, contract where you use their language and then just put in, or they put in Town of Harwich? For you, is that how?
Correct. They provide, they actually provided the contract. And then I sent that contract to town council.
To council, okay.
Asked them to review it.
Totally.
They made some changes to the contract. I sent that change back to this guy Nate, who's the CEO of the company. He was fine with it. And then I put it before you.
Okay.
Great.
I withdraw my second then, pending next week.
To further answer the question, however, we could have asked KP Law for the, a town's version of a consent to photograph, videotape, use likenesses, et cetera. We opted not in this case because it came to us as a straightforward matter, but we can explore that as well, if that's the desire of the board. It's not uncommon where we have their material, we might seek to add our material, and both items are signed. So I just want to put that out there for your edification.
Okay.
We could have a Town of Harwich version, if that's the way you want to go. Council didn't offer. We didn't ask.
I mean, I think if you get the clarification, yeah, I don't, I don't see that. Just get the clarification on that term and make the edits. And I think then it'll come back. Thank you, John.
I withdraw my second.
All right. So that will come back.
Motion withdrawn.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Not that the recreation report is not important, but we have a young lady in the back that I think is here for topic B. Any way we could take them out of order?
Sure.
She might, they might have to take her to bed.
I might follow her.
So Madam Chair, if I could, we have our Director of Council on Aging, who has been a great help to the town. Because when we talk about preschool, you don't necessarily think aging. And so I've asked the Director to come here tonight. I also want to put out there that she's doing so in her private time. This is her vacation week.
Oh, no.
So we do appreciate you taking the time. And further, I would say that this is our official rollout for fiscal year 2025. So for that school year as well, the preschool stipend program for the Town of Harwich. I will turn it over to the Director. I also have some comments to make about funding going forward.
Great.
But through you, Madam Chair, to the Director.
Thank you. And thank you, Julie, for joining us.
Yeah, of course. Happy to do it. So to give you a little background of what we've been working on, a few, starting a few months ago, where it looked like the town, this program was going to be funded again, most likely, we started considering some options for program management for the upcoming year. Last, this past year for fiscal year 24, it was, as we all know, a great success. We served about 70 families and worked with around, it was 15 childcare providers. We are expecting, or I am expecting, more enrollment this year because we did carry a small waitlist last year. And I know that the information about the program has disseminated more widely to the community, which I think will increase the amount of applications as well. So based on last year's enrollment and what I am gauging for this year, I know we'll have at least 80 people being, applying for the program just based off of the waitlist that we had last year. I think as many as 100 families could be applying and enrolling. And then that will also obviously increase the number of childcare providers that we're working with because we don't, 15 is still not saturating the market. There are others out there that we have not been working with. So maybe up to 20 of the childcare providers in the area. So thinking about how to manage the program best, make sure it has the proper amount of attention and oversight. I looked to the six other towns on the Cape that have a voucher program, which are, all happen to be in our area. So there's Dennis, Orleans, Chatham, Eastham, Wellfleet, and Truro. So I reached out to them, to the program managers there, to ask them, how do they manage their program? You know, what's the structure like? One town did not reply to me, but two, two said that they use an outside agency to do the program management for them. The three others said they do manage it internally out of the administration office. At least one of those towns confirmed with me that they increased the number of hours for positions. So they had had a part-time position in that department, made it full-time to make sure that the program was being managed properly. They all work similarly to ours. They function the same way. It's just the amount that's budgeted per town and per family differs from town to town. This past year in fiscal year 24, myself and my executive assistant in the COA office worked on the program. Different phases of the program require more effort from me versus her, and then vice versa throughout the year. But we both tracked our time very carefully. She's meticulous at that kind of thing. And we found that it took around, about approximately seven hours a week to manage the program, which is pretty significant, especially because we are already working full-time for our department.
You're doing other
So knowing that the program is going to grow, I wasn't quite sure how tenable it was to leave the program under the COA's direction. Between fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 24, our patronage to programs has literally doubled. No exaggeration. The number of people riding our van has then subsequently doubled because they come to our programs. So our ridership has increased by a third. The number of people that come to see our social worker and our town nurse has increased. We are doing more with the staff that we have already. My executive assistant, we tried very hard to assume the work without, you know, without moving other tasks around. But sometimes she still had to charge a lot of comp time. We had a lot of comp time charged to our department last year so that we could provide the proper management for the program. So I did look to outside agencies to see who's out there, who's local to us that might be interested in managing the program. I identified four that seemed like really strong contenders, two of the ones that are already providing program management for other towns, and then a couple others that I felt it was worth talking to. So I informally reached out just to say, you know, is this something that, are you looking to expand your portfolio, et cetera? Or is this something you'd be willing to take on for the new places that had not done something similarly? I got back moderate response. The answer from those who were interested, it was, we would love to be considered for this, but our plates are already full. We need to plan ahead. For example, for fiscal year 26, they would be, they would be willing to put their hat in the ring. And they weren't ready to commit to this year, but wanted to be informed about an IFB if we developed one. So we did develop an IFB, made a detailed scope of work. I updated the program application. I updated the program information sheet. Tried to talk a little bit more to share, share with them what the scope of work really was going to entail. And it sounds like it's going to be too much for them
Okay.
for this year. That doesn't mean I've explored all of the local agencies. There might be others out there that I have not identified yet. But this is, these are the ones that I thought were the most likely. So looking like it's going to stay with us. We, like I said, we do have the application updated. It's ready to roll out anytime. There's like, there's a one-pager, sort of an FAQ, not exactly in that style, but that's the idea that we send out with the application. So it gives all the details of the program, just, you know, all of the, all of the main questions that someone would want answered. So that's been updated. The application has changed very little. It was reviewed by town council last year, and I didn't want to make substantial changes to that, obviously. So it's just tweaked just a little bit to be more applicable for this year. The main decision to make was related to our protocols for the year for grant dispersment. Seeing that we had families on the waitlist last year, I really don't want to see that happen again. I would like to serve as many people as apply. But not knowing how many people are going to apply, you don't know how much to award at the beginning. So I want to, I considered a few different options for that. Talked to other, again, talked to other towns, what do they do? How do they structure this? And so I did come up with what I feel like is a strong protocol for grant dispersment for this year that will allow us to serve more families and be equitable about it. So it will, and that's presented in the report that I give to you guys. So just to review what I'm proposing, as you know, we have a $250,000 budget. So I would, I would propose that we assume that we're going to, or work off of the assumption that we're going to have 100 families enroll, right? Let's assume the most. So what I was proposing is that we would award each family that is eligible, that applies, at the beginning of the year, a $2,200 stipend. So that's leveraging $220,000 of our budget, which is obviously the bulk of it. But I want the, the award to be meaningful to the families as well. So that does leave us at least $30,000 remaining, possibly more, depending on how many families ultimately enroll. What we did see last year is that enrollment in the program was overwhelmingly in the fall. There were only, you know, applications trickling in throughout the year. So I would want to reserve some funds for this trickling in.
Sure.
But what I had proposed is that families would, the intention would be for them to apply the stipend to their full childcare burden for each month until it, until it's used up, right? And then in January, so once we've had several months of program enrollment, again, it was almost exclusively in the fall last year. Come January, we can see how many people did actually enroll. So how much of our funds ultimately were, are going to be leveraged. And then from there, we can make some additional awards. So what I was, what I believe would be the most equitable is that those who've used up their stipend, meaning they have a high childcare burden, those who've used up their stipend could submit, could request, not submit a new, a new formal application, but could request additional funds if it was necessary for them. And then those would be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. We'll decide what the award amount should be for that second dispersment once we know how much we have to work with, basically.
Okay.
So that's, that's where things stand.
Well, I, first of all, want to just thank you for all the work that you and your staff did for the past year. And I understand it's basically another burden till next year. But I think that, to your point, we need to look to find outside source if we can, or a way to address it going forward for, I know it doesn't help for this year, but it's such an important program that. And I also think that, you know, based on the success, it'd be nice to see us be able to allocate more monies to, to the program. But Joe, you said you had some comments, so I'll pass them.
Thank you. And you've, I would echo some of what you've said. So to the point of resources, I've promised the Director to find other resources within our organization to help with this project, especially where she's talked about the need upfront. So I'm already working with the Treasury Collector's Office because they're going to be dispersing the funds. We're ready to have it put on the website and roll it out in the cycle that parents are familiar with. But as Julie's just said, we, the town, are going to release the information for bids for a program manager for this program. And the schedule that she's outlined dovetails nicely with our planning for fiscal year 2026. Now, that's not to say we couldn't have a management company for this fiscal year, but you've heard the dollar amount. We have $250,000 for the program. We, as a town, have not talked about management costs if necessary.
Right.
So we know that the success of the program leads to a potential burden on staffing it. There's any number of ways we can address that. I think the good news is we roll it out after tonight because of this presentation. We get the applications coming back in because there's been no changes from the consumers' end. There'll be internal changes on how we process in September, but none of that should be seen or felt by the applicants. So really, the question that we now come into as we talk about a potential special town meeting in November, if there's a way to impact upon program reserves or anything else with the IFB. The IFB is similar in some sense to what the trust just had me work on for them. Actually, let me correct that. The trust did a great amount of work. We, in administration, released the bids and have them coming back. You know, the, the cost for management for a rental assistance program, as an example, may not be, and it's the same dollar amount. The trust has $250,000 available. We're expecting to see bids under $20,000. So it may be that as we release the bids to these groups that are out there, that are done it in other towns, it may be relatively short money. But we didn't want to impact upon the dollars for the program yet.
Right.
And so that's really the issue that needs to be, I think, fleshed out now. It's not the rollout of the program, although that was an impact of having it come to you by tonight. Because I want to emphasize, the Director was reaching out to people May, June, July, and August to try and find out, is there anyone else that can help us out there? Because we saw the impact on staffing. We know we didn't have an add to staff, and I'm not suggesting that per se, but we didn't have an add to staff fiscal year 25 budget. So that's really the next question going forward. So the overall message I would say is the town will release the bids, because I think it's going it's going to help all of us make better deci, or more informed decisions going forward. We have $250,000 aside in administration. All of those costs right now can go for that. We can rely upon other resources within our government, but they are compensatory. There is comp time earned. So there is a hidden cost, per se. But I think the message tonight needs to be that the program is a success as you've envisioned it, and we now have the problem of needing to do more because it is such a success. So again, thank you to Julie, her team, for getting that done, having the IFB ready to go. I'm looking to have that released no later than August 30th. It's already done and relatively in a strong place for me to release it. We should also think about as a community, because I think Julie can attest, the director can attest to the fact that in some other communities, the groups that do it became nonprofit groups in the community. So if we're not successful doing it as a hardcore program with a staff within the Town of Harwich, because we understand the constraints on staffing, and if we're not getting the existing agencies that are out there, council did opine back in June that none of the five of you, nor I, nor the director, could start a nonprofit, but if there's a ground swell in the community, you know, if there is a Harwich friends of something, that could help us with the management. But the overall message, I think, is, I think the preschool stipend program is an unqualified, or is a, yeah, an unqualified success. We're going to need more money because the community needs more money, and we can manage this program in the short term as we look to manage it more professional, sorry, strike that, more definitively outside of the government. If you want us to go in a different direction, we can plan that for fiscal year 26.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Any other comments by board members? No. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we go forward, though, my only concern is, at 20,000, you're already looking at 8% overhead. And the reason I said that is, one of the attractive parts of this program ultimately was, and I'm going to get stricken down by lightning, I'm sure, but I didn't really want to see the program just give money to the school because my perennial question every year is, is that put somebody in front of a kid as opposed to administration costs? And I don't want to build something that eventually has a robust administration cost where kids aren't benefiting at all, it's just the administration of the thing. So my tipping point would be the 20 grand. If it starts going beyond that, you really, you've just taken nine kids out of the, out of the loop, where they're not going to be capable of getting the money to bring with them. And I'm not sure if that covers everything anyway, because costs have been escalating. So whatever we do, I think we should be very concerned that the delivery point is the kids.
Yeah, but I mean, if we need to have an outside source, do it. So, and we need to increase, as Julie said, monies coming in, that would be obviously part of that analysis.
I was just bringing up that 20,000 is regated 8%.
Right.
Madam Chair, Richard Wastek, Chair of the Harwich Council on Aging. I don't want to minimize the efforts on behalf of the staff to get this done and to administer a program like this. 20 is cheap, frankly, to run it. And if you've got to fund it greater to cover the management of it, I don't want to see the time taken away from the programs of the Council on Aging to manage this program when there are, there are a number of groups out there that could potentially do it. If we need to fund it additionally for managing it, let's fund it, so you keep the money to the kids, but don't hurt the programs happening at the Council on Aging because it has to be managed in-house. I do believe you underestimate the amount of time and energy it takes on behalf of the staff to implement this program.
Thank you, Richard. I think it's important that we, you know, look to see that we increase funding for it overall for, to help more families, but I also think we need to incorporate the monies that it costs to have an outside source do that.
Hi. My name's Amanda Booth. My husband Reed and I have lived in Harwich for 10 years, and he grew up here, but we, myself, have been here for 10 years. My daughter Maisie benefited from the program greatly last year, so thank you for approving that, and thank you to Julie for managing that program because her and Lauren, I think Lauren is your executive assistant, she did a fantastic job. My question, I'm just a little curious. So I have two kids. My kids are 14 months apart. My son Nolan is going into preschool in the fall, so it'll be five days a week that my kids will be in preschool. Is it, and this may be too in the weeds of a question, but would it be the 2,200 or whatever the amount is proposed, would it be per child, would it be per family, or is that something that's just curious?
Julie, you just have to come up here.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So the way we operated last year in fiscal, fiscal year 24 is that any application and award was given per child, not per family, and I was intending that to be the same this year.
Right. And that, but there was an age?
There, yes, there is, sorry, there is an age eligibility, and this is, this is the same across all of the towns on the Cape, which is how we came up with this. You have to be, the child has to be three or four years old as of August 31st of 2024. That's what we're in, yes. So three or four years old, and there really can't, that's one of our only eligibility criterias. We really can't waive that, I feel. And, and that's consistent with what the other towns do, so I feel like we have a solid base for that decision.
Great. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you again for offering those resources.
Thank you for coming tonight. So you don't need us to take any specific action tonight?
No. Be warned, so to speak, if I could. But if I can go back to our previous speaker, I do want to emphasize again, because I couldn't agree more, our Director of Council on Aging has been the stalwart supporter with her team on our preschool stipends. So I am talking to department heads tomorrow, and we're going to put out the call to all of our departments and to try and shore up the treasury collection office if we have a, you know, a run on the program for September. We want to get the money out, and I want to rely upon existing staff that can aid because it is an impact on Council on Aging programs, and no program should suffer because of any other program.
Right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And then that leads us to our last item under rule business.
So, Madam Chair, if I could introduce, as the Recreation Director comes forward, you've heard and been discussing and hearing about recreation programming. We now have the online capability for registration. What the Director is going to be talking about is the rollout next Monday, August 26th, of the payment portion of the registration. What is lovingly referred to, not our words, but we'll go with it, MyRec, which is M-Y-R-E-C. So with that, Madam Chair, through you, I turn it over to the Director.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric Beebe, Recreation Director. As Joe said, we are rolling out the financial portion. We'll have the full rollout of MyRec next Monday, August 26th. Up until now, we did launch the website itself in March, and it's been a great success for families. They were able to do things such as view the programs, program information, program descriptions. They could register online, not pay yet. They could view the rosters of the programs, and a big part tool for us was the, like, we could do daily notices, whether there's a rain out or any, any kind of program change, a change in location. We were able to update them daily with that. So now with this, we, myself and Crystal Legendre from the Treasurer's Office did the final payment training today. Right afterwards, Crystal submitted the compliance checklist that was required, so we are good to go for all financial online payments, debit cards, credit cards, which will make it even easier for users. So this is going to be a great tool for, for our department and users going forward. It, it rolls out really well with our fall programs going forward. We're just putting all those out now, including our after-school programs, soccer, field hockey, flag football, lacrosse, what am I missing? Outdoor adventure. We have a whole slate of programming, and this is a perfect timing for people to go on, sign up, make their payments. And I, I think it's a long time coming, and I think it's going to be a great asset to the department and the town going forward.
So with the notification to people that they can pay, you can already communicate that to them because of already signed up?
Yes, we'll be able to communicate it on the website. We also held a, a large event on Saturday night. It wasn't just for MyRec, but it was the Red River Bonfire Event. We had all kinds of beach, beach games, we had bonfire food, things like that, and a big part of that was promoting our fall programs and the MyRec system going forward. And then just for everybody's information, to get to the MyRec website for us, it's harwichma.myrec.com. Dot com. Yep.
There's also a link on our website through recreation, correct?
Yes, there is. Yep.
Great. Any questions from board members?
Madam Chair, if I could, before you open it up, as Eric said, certainly thank you to our Rec Director, but also Crystal Legendre, our Assistant Treasurer Collector, her team, and Ed Spelman for getting everybody together. As you'd imagine, with an online payment portal such as this one, there was a lot of backend work that had to be done. The certification that Eric talked about was the last step today, and so I just want to emphasize that. What that is, is it's, the town is required to demonstrate the manner that we're going to keep secure all of the data that we get as a result of this program. So the town has a number of payment portals, we've just added one. And so those payment credentials or PCI requirements are critical. We're safe for the next year, if you will, or we're certified for the next year. But we know in the coming months, we're going to have to, through the Treasury, through the Finance Division Treasury Collection, make sure we're continuing that because in this era of data breaches and all of that, that was the last major hurdle, and we passed with flying colors. So that's, I think, a good thing to bear out.
Great.
Thank you.
Board members?
Hi, Terry. Can you just?
Yeah, you can.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Michael.
So Eric, I didn't hear you mention the pizza party.
I'm sorry. There are pizza parties quite often for sick, fit class. I'm sorry.
I'm going to invite you all to come to the next one when I get it together.
I can put that on the MyRec website as well.
Well, thank you, Eric, and I think that this is something the parents, I know, were looking for, and it's great to hear it's up and running. And I guess that, you know, one thing, not to go backwards, but I didn't understand the depth of having to do all this until I listened at the different Rec Committees, et cetera. But is there a way that in the future, we can look to make a uniformed system of payment? Because all these different programs, you know, you pay your water bill, it's one program. Now you're paying, you know, and again, I don't mean to open a can of worms, but we have progress here, but...
So it's, it's, it is a can of worms, but it's, it's the relevant question. We have at least four online payment portals, and I know that your interim finance director is very familiar with any number of portals, certainly our, our interim treasurer collector. Eric and the team in finance are learning more than they probably ever wanted to know. So the answer is yes, there, there is a single system that the town may want to progress to. It is probably a two-year lift, but that doesn't mean we couldn't do it. It just means that if we start now and we factor it into fiscal years 26 and 27, and probably leveraging our fund accounting software and Munis and others, we could get to a single system. So, because I do think, from our perspective, the more systems you have, the more liabilities you're exposed to. So, yeah, we would definitely, as a town, separate from Rec, absolutely want to have a single-source portal, and we can do that.
Great.
So that's something I can talk to Ed and Eric about to make sure we track that going forward.
Yeah, I think that, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Town Administrators' Report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'm pleased to announce a per diem chef hiring. So Linda Kelly is going to be joining us as a per diem town chef for the Town of Harwich's Council on Aging Department. As you know, with per diems, it's a not-benefited position, and it does not exceed 19 hours. Linda is joining us effective. Everything paperwork goes well. I know earlier than next Monday, August 26th, and I know this is a needed add to staff that was funded for the Council on Aging, so we're thrilled to have Linda come join us in the next week or two. And then I had some project deliverable updates. I know some board members have been asking. I just wanted to go through a, not a complete list, but some, some key projects and deliverables that I think people have been interested in asking about. With regard to general contracts and procurement issues, I know, Madam Chair, you know, but for what it's worth, the, the RFP for the trust property, known as 456 Queen Anne, others may refer to it by the original owner name, but the trust and the town finalized the selection process, and so for that project, Penrose was selected as the developer. So that procurement's done, but now we progress to the negotiations between the trust, staff, and council on the development, construction agreement, and the, the ground lease agreement. So, great to reach that milestone, lots more work to do before shovels hit the ground. As I mentioned earlier, the trust is also working or worked through a request for proposals, so I'll be evaluating their responses for a rental assistance program manager. So that's another program we're going to be able to bring on board. You heard me talk earlier about the invitation for bids on the preschool, and I mentioned earlier that working with the, the Energy and Climate Change Committee, and I apologize to Glenn, I believe I'm saying his last name correctly, but Glenn Mimic and I met with Link Hooper. We are progressing towards the construction phase, or the sighting of the construction phase on the electric vehicle charging station at Schoolhouse Road parking lot. Again, one station is two ports, and that is expected to take up two parking spaces, so we want to be aware of that going forward. But I'm also working with that group. They are looking to have other locations sighted potentially, which makes sense, so I'll be coming back to you folks, if not September 4th. You're meeting later in September for other potential sites. I think there's some synergy there where it's one application to Eversource for the funding. So I think the best example you can see is the Town of Barnstable. They went with five stations, which for them was 10 ports. So we can identify other locations, but I would still work for the board on that. But we're to the point where, once we know all the sites, the applications will go in, the construction would begin in the spring, and given your relevance of the topic tonight, that also means that two other spaces would come out of rotation for combustible vehicles parking, but more on that later.
Internal combustion.
Sorry.
Combustible vehicles would go.
Yeah. Thank you. Non-electric vehicles parking spaces. That's the best I can do at this time of night. Other contracts that are being worked on, so, you know, we have VHB, they do stormwater review, and they do subdivision, so those contracts needed to be renewed. I've worked with VHB on that, as well as the traffic on-call. Now, meeting with Steve Rhodes following your last meeting, VHB is already working on the traffic analyses and studies that we've talked about, both what I'm referring to generally the North Harwich area, but we know it's a little bit broader than that, as well as Harwichport. The only question on the traffic contract is if the dollar amount's going to exceed my authority, so if it does, we'd look to have you finalize that contract on September 4th. With regard to other RFPs and programs, working with staff and council, the Queen Anne Road properties, you know, we have finalized the preliminary determination. We've discovered that there is no merger necessary whatsoever on the two Queen Anne parcels of the three. The next step is working with council to determine the lot-specific language for the RFP. Staff had identified, excuse me, council had identified that she does not believe we can yet advertise them as buildable lots until some questions are answered on utility access, setback compliance. I don't believe wetlands is an issue, but we've got to put that out there, and topography, among other issues, so I'm working with staff and council to get those completed, because we do want to be able to advertise them. At the minimums that the boards talked about, we can advertise them individually, and we want to be able to advertise them as buildable. With wastewater, there's been quite a bit of progress going on. Wastewater Phase 3, so construction, we're already in the process of having our construction progress meetings. That's Town of Harwich staff, GHD, and of course, Robert B. Hour. We will have our next construction progress meeting on September 10th, but we are trending towards, we're still waiting for RBO to confirm, but they're looking at a construction start date of November 1st. So we'll have more information on that following our September 10th. So at your meeting after that in, in September, we'll have more of a formal presentation to let everyone know that the construction for Phase 3 East Harwich will be beginning. Related to that, but unrelated to construction, is the Clean Water Trust. As you know, we have been... As you know, we have been authorized for up to $49-plus million for, for loan service through the Clean Water Trust. I submitted that application last week with all the attachments. There was one question that came back from the state to confirm the accounting that we have, so I'm working with the team on that to hopefully do that tomorrow. But as part of the discussion going forward, we will be able to acknowledge that we have approval for 0% on the loan, which is phenomenal. We're now working on the loan forgiveness, and the questionnaire will get us there. So could have some strong announcements on that in September. And I'm still working with legal and the three different parties to get the pump station easement settlements done. The goal is to have those executed by you folks. At your meeting on September 4th, as you know, that meeting has a very definite wastewater and joint meeting with commissioners, so we have to have that in front of you at that point. I've been meeting weekly with Mark Drainville from GHD on all other wastewater items. In fact, the other one that I think is relevant or in most front of mind for you folks, the grinder pump, so we do have a grinder pump policy, and working off of your board policy, we're looking to have first reading be September 4th on your policy, because there are some regulation elements that also tie to the wastewater commissioners, sorry, the water wastewater commissioners. So having the two of you meeting then and discussing that, I think, is going to be helpful, and that will get the first reading done, and then second reading and approval. And then last but not least on all this, the Colebrook Project, I know you know, Madam Chair, it may have an announcement on that, but we're now reaching the stage where they're going to be in post-construction, so the town is required to do monitoring. We had funding, we thought we had funding set aside three years ago. It may not be that that funding's available. So we're working with the finance team and the information that GHD got from our former superintendent to see whether or not we have funds in place for the monitoring. Otherwise, that may have to be a, a question at the town meeting in November.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a breath, I'm going to take a sip, and I'm sure you have questions.
Thank you, Joe. Do any board members have any questions on any, any of that?
I'm just going to call you out. You said Drainville for the sewers and you used Rhodes for the railways. You making this stuff up?
No, and when I chuckled at that, someone said, "And powers for government," so these are all legit names.
Right, fair enough.
My daughter suggested that we have a lawyer named Sewington or something like that. I didn't go with that. These are all real names, not made up.
Right, fair enough.
So I do have a quick question, Joe. Thank you for all that. You mentioned at a November town meeting, what's the backup plan for funding if there is not a fall town meeting?
We may have funding, and there's no, it doesn't appear that we have funding left over from Phase II, which was where we were starting the grinder. We have two different appropriating articles, last year for 50 million, this year for up to 4 million. We're evaluating whether that's allowed, and we're evaluating whether there's other funds available that have already been appropriated from wastewater. So it may not require a new funding source, but it may require a town meeting action.
Understood, thank you.
And, and thank you, and I do apologize, I had one other update. I mentioned tomorrow's the department head meeting for the month of August. Department heads have been working on their narratives for anything related to fiscal year '26, so that they have a deliverable to me by the end of this week, so that I can inform you folks, perhaps if there's time, Madam Chair, at your agenda on September 4th about where we're shaping up for the annual town meeting as well. So we staff have been working on that since the closure of the last town meeting. So that's still in the works as well.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Select Board Member report, Pete?
A couple items, Madam Chair, through you. If the information I received is accurate, could we get an update on, on some potential damage to the fields behind the community center?
From the circus?
Not sure.
So there's a, yeah, we certainly can get an update, and just on that note, Angie Chalaka is going to come to our next meeting to, to thank everybody for, you know, all the work that went into having the circus and the success that it was. But they also have an insurance policy, so I'm not sure if that's the damage you're talking about, but I'll certainly look into it.
Yeah, and it could be, but yeah, any, any damage regarding that field would be appreciated. Was not aware of it, it was brought to my attention, so caught a little off-guard by that. Additionally, while I have the floor, a reminder that we put a 30-day limit on the interim Finance Director, so hopefully on that September 4 meeting, we can have the agreement.
Sorry, I was waiting for the Chair to finish. I, I believe the vendor has provided the contract. I had asked the Chair to look at it, I think the Chair has confirmed it.
Yeah, I looked at it.
Yep. So then, yes, it would be coming back for you on September 4th.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I know the, the Finance Director position has been advertised, and I know we often talk about a lack of interest from, from candidates. So if, if that remains the case, perhaps a future discussion, Madam Chair, on utilizing a search firm to seek out a qualified candidate. And lastly, if you could, I know you mentioned it, but just a reminder, if you could forward the letters from Mr. Kelleher, and also that letter from the gentleman who wheeled his grandchild down to the go-karts?
Yeah, I thought he sent that to all of us, but I'll share both of those.
Please, I don't remember seeing that one, but...
I don't either.
Yeah, I'll share, I'll share both of them. Marks just came in today.
Yeah, thank you.
Don?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just would like to recognize the success of the 10th Annual Pug Fest. That was a huge success, and thanks to everyone involved who will be donating again this year to, to family, to, to Harwich not-for-profit funds. So that, and Joe, if you don't mind, just listening to Eric talk about payment online. Where do, if I could just get an update on the emails for the, for FinCom, and I know we had talked about the beginning of the fiscal year, we would be able to fund the work to get the emails for the Finance Committee and maybe some others, that would be great. I don't need it tonight, but like, for the next...
If I have it, can I give it for now, and we can still have another topic?
Yeah, that'd be great, sure.
So the, the Information Technology Director has that in her fiscal year 2025 plan. She's worked on a couple grants, so I know that's on her punch list to get done, so I'm hopeful that we get that done in fiscal year '25, quarter two or three, but I'll work with her on a project plan, but that is still front of mind. There were some other projects that are ahead of that, and other grant opportunities that were ahead of that, but we haven't lost sight of it, and I can follow up more formally if you'd like.
You just did, thanks.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
So one thing I have is that was in the end of the packet, was, as requested, select Board Goals and Objectives are put in a Word format, and we've already voted these, but just want to make sure everybody's good with the format, good with the content. Yeah?
Madam Chair, is it possible to get a red line version of that? Because when I was reading it, there's an awful lot of it that looked like it was different than what we voted on, at least in language.
So the, sure, I mean, I'll go back to Natasha, and Danielle helped with this and took it directly from the spreadsheet, and put, you know, put it in a Word format.
I get that, but I was having a tough time correlating that to what I had.
Well, let me talk to them about a red line, because I know that it took them some time to, to take all this information and put it in a Word document.
If I could speak on behalf of my team, that's something I can do, if that's what you're looking for, but we wouldn't have a red line. They took an Excel document and created a Word document. I can send you both documents if you wanted to review it that way, but to the Chair.
I just couldn't relate some of this to the text that was in Excel. That's, that's kind of what I'm saying. It looked like, I'm not saying it was radically different, but the words used were not the ones we voted on.
So if I could work through the Chair rather than my team, because my team did not do any freelance writing.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, some of what we put in the spreadsheet needed, because it was really kind of basic wording, so that it could then be transferred into paragraph form, so that's the only...
Along those lines, and I'm happy to share this with you, Madam Chair, or with the town administrator, but on, on the financial objective, these two items weren't listed or included, so those could just be added back into it. Again, you could all get it afterwards.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add that then if anything's missing. So we'll just go back, and Joe, I'll talk to you about looking at the spreadsheet versus this, but the bulk of the information is definitely here. And I just wanted, I just wanted us to have a document that we could all agree upon, so then we can then also come up with our criteria for assessing the town administrator that we can all agree on as well.
And Madam Chair, before we adjourn?
Yeah.
It's remiss in not recognizing the, the Harwich Mariners.
Yes.
For the successful championship season. So we congratulate them, the entire team, the whole organization, coaching staff, they did Harwich proud, so congratulations again.
They sure did, it was amazing.
Broke-cake baseball week.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move on.
All in favor?
Aye.